Good evening, everyone. Thank you so very much for joining us this evening. The time is 7:11. Roll call, please.
Nelson.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Blackman.
Here.
Paredes.
Here.
Lee Stotz.
Here.
Corrigan.
Here, and a forum is present. I have, we're gonna move through the agenda. And I am going, we're going to move the agenda items two, three, and four, and then when we start five, I am going to move the data discussion to the end. Because I think that will take up the majority of our time. There are a bunch of other discussion items that we may not even discuss, so I just want to hit those quickly. Okay, there are no audience comments, there's no one who has signed up. So we will move on to Dr. Smith's superintendent's report.
Absolutely. Summer's absolutely in full swing, and we are busy here now, and at the end of school, we have some work happening here at Normalville. But Summer Academy's up and running, I would like to take a minute, we've had some bussing issues with Summer Academy, but thanks for handling that, and Wanda Alexander, Karen Franch, really a number of other people, just for their tenacity and their hard work to get everything straightened out, and we'll be setting the updated information out today, so we're looking forward to some improvements tomorrow, and the rest of the week. You know, Fran's taking it very seriously, and she's just done a good job getting us to this point. Our strategic planning work kicks off tomorrow at 9:00 AM with a adjutary meeting with Barry Solfield for the Columbia Consortium for Educational Change. So I'm meeting with myself, a small group of stakeholders, Steve Pringles, who's board representative, and a few representatives from the Flosk Education Association, you know, Joan's gonna be there tomorrow, so, really, we'll set the pathway for this important work for the next four to five months, make sure that we're not forgetting anything, or in particular groups of people, so that when we do get started, we have a really confident look at the work of our school district, we can produce a really nice product. From my previous work with Perry, and just knowing some of the things that he's done, he will produce a strategic plan that is both actionable and measurable, and I think that's exactly what we need if we're going to move forward effectively, we have to do what we're going to do, and be able to tell whether or not we've done that. Just a couple of nuts and bolts to end my update, Normalville is closed on Fridays. During the week of the 4th of July, which is coming up in a couple of weeks, Normalville will be closed that Thursday and Friday because of the holiday. So, if you were looking for us, you know, please, just make sure to call your business hours, we'll be back to you as soon as possible. But that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? So I have a couple. One, because I know there were a few bumps and bruises with the start of Summer Academy, and Summer Academy, it would be great to get an update on how the overall summer went, and also, an update on the curriculum that's used for the Summer Academy, and how that works with our regular curriculum for the school year.
Yeah, we usually bring our initial data review, does it need before that, or can you wait till after the fall map? You ask, you give them the fall map assessment, take that data, compare it to kids, and run it to the board?
Yeah, I think it's us about data, I mean, I think I would like to hear, especially since we have new board members, how the summer program supports students over the summer, and how they transition back into the school year. I mean, because we do use different curriculums for math in ELA in the summer than we do in our regular school year. So just an update, and that can be folded into just an overall update on how Summer Academy went, number of students, the data piece, you can fold that in when you have the data.
Good.
The second thing is, it would be great, Steve, the next board meeting, after the strategic plan, you'd like to just give an update, which I know we probably do anyway, and a three or four report, but it would be great for us to have a whole plan, and I don't know if this is gonna come out of the meeting tomorrow, but we need a timeline of all the strategic planning activities, especially where community engagement fits in, and what that community engagement will look like. I think, well, we were obviously here for the last strategic planning process, I don't know if anyone else, Carolyn, were you, did you participate in any of the community engagement?
I was.
Okay.
I know that Cameron was participating.
Right, that's right, yeah. So, I mean, so you at least know how to do four and write five, at least feedback, and maybe we should share some of that feedback with you, with Steve.
Oh, you do that, sure.
But what works, what didn't, if we want to broaden our reach in terms of community engagement, in terms of who we're bringing in to have those conversations, and whether we're bringing them here, or we're going somewhere else to have those conversations, I mean, so, but it would be great to see the whole strategic plan process.
And absolutely, if other board members have, I'll say, let me share with me at any time, you know, please feel free to email me tonight if you have any questions, and certainly if you have any thoughts that come to you about, oh, you haven't thought about this, I'm happy to.
Yeah, I mean, and it would just be good to calendarize all of that stuff.
Like, you've got a great calendar.
I know our calendar is already, that is over the ball, but, so, do you know when we plan on having a draft to review, never mind, when we plan on having a final strategic plan completed for the school year? Is it a year-long process?
Probably January 13th or mid-June, that's what I'm anticipating. So kind of backwards planning from that, we've at least started talking about it somewhere around November, most likely. We're gonna have a couple of flights in Seattle in November, December, but that's, I think, we'll see what he says, you know, really, maybe through January, I mean, we're really hitting it September, October, November. They have a good working plan, because what happens in between typically, you have that initial meeting, you have all these different groups together, the administration, that's what that can do to work. So there's at least probably three weeks in between the meetings to produce the action plans, the livid rules, those sorts of discussions. We'll talk tomorrow, and I think a big piece of tomorrow, like you said, is let's set a timeline, just getting all those dates locked in, unless you, that way we can find and determine whoever wanna be, but also who wants to be involved in this point in time to clear schedules, if we have to move a date, we can do that, but then if we don't keep anybody out of the process, it's effective.
I think that, initially, that sounds great, I know that five years ago, I believe our end date was somewhere in May, and I think, and what happened was, because there were some discrepancies, or there was some disagreement, we wound up being, I wanna say, August or even September by the time that we really had a sense of where mission statement looked like, where vision statement looked like, and really what the individual pieces looked like, and the degree to which we really more wanted the administration to articulate a little bit more, you know, what those actionable steps look like, so we could then communicate that to the community. But I think that certainly our, the timeframe that you just sketched out now, it seems, you know, certainly nice concern for certain major.
Great. I would be particularly interested in how the consultant plans to use the data gathered from the community engagement sessions, because I do feel like that information was lost previously, and it did not inform very well what the end product is gonna be, so, it would be great if you could give more information.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, next item, we have one action item, can I have a motion, please, to approve the personnel report as presented? So, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Chris?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Lee Stotz?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Blackman?
Yes. Corrigan.
This is motion has passed. Again, we're going to hold off on the math data discussion until the end, so we will move to item B, Consolidated District Plan.
Yes, so the consolidated district plan is a new, not really a grand application, but a new requirement as a precursor to completing our Title I and our IDA, as well as our Title III and our Title IV grants. It's sort of a precursor now, the grants will now all be consolidated into one application. So this form is a summary of all the things that you do within those grants. Following that approval with the State Board of Education, we will then complete our official grant application for each program. Title II as well, which is the professional grant.
Is there anything other than this form that has changed with the process?
Okay.
Is there anything else that's changed with?
No, no, so this is just a, a, a temporary application, it's a form, you said it correctly. The actual application will still be, will still need to be completed for a year. A lot of the information that you had, a lot of the information carries over from the previous strategic partnership type of plan, and the type two information, additional information we added.
Can you remind us when, when is the grant due for, when's this form due?
Uh, this form is due, it's just prior to the submission of the grant, so you have this one, and then you need four, it's starting, they're now getting, they've done a lot of this with the, the financial reporting, they're having to once feed each other, which is kind of nice, but it's getting all that upfront work done first, so now I've noticed like a lot of things that I hadn't do about a month ago, I now don't have to do it to the grant, because it's pulled from the other systems, so I'm not getting effort anymore, and that's, I think, a lot of what they're doing here is, well, with the programmatic side, they're, they're getting the information in one place, knowing that it's applicable to three, four, or five different grants, and now it's feeding into there, so it's kind of eliminating some of the work.
I think that's, and when is the grant due?
Uh, they don't give you a real set date, it's, you just can't start spending unless you submit. So, and they just gave us, yeah, they just gave us the allegations in the last three weeks or something.
Okay, I'm asking only because I don't think we've had a title, I don't think we've had a conversation recently about title funds, and how, yeah, so it would be great to see how much better we've become in exhausting all those funds.
Really good.
How we're gonna use it for next year.
Keep in mind too, that the Title I grant says that they're not actually done until August 31st, so, so we're still running some of these ventures, room work that's being done over the summer through August 31st, after that, then it expires, you can bring that report back to us later.
Okay, and so when do you have to do the budget for title funds for next year, since you don't have, since you have until August, so you're expending?
Yeah, so once this is approved, we can start working on, so, we'll actually have two grants open simultaneously, they will relax by about a month.
Okay. Till August?
Well.
I think September, more like September, because our grant will officially be done until.
We'll tell you what we plan to put into the budget, and maybe share all that information, which I don't, spend the money very effectively, I don't think, but, we just, so, certainly, get that money in classrooms, and get it into programs that we'll support in, so, perhaps we'll bring it back, I suppose, by initial conversation, we got a 15, that night is a little, we'll be able to cover anything for this year, I would say, this grant, we push until September.
July.
Yeah, we know where the money's going.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, we have an idea based on, we wouldn't want to just completely switch gears from what we've done previously, and it's not working, so we have a general idea, and we extended the grant to include some of our professional development opportunities that have been part of the state, so, continuing to have that.
Are there any other questions about the consolidated plan? Portable air conditioning units.
So we have talked about portable air conditioning units as we moved up our start date in order to accommodate some of our 28 construction schedule, we know that's what we got, this, in our conversation with the NBA, we wanted to look for some potential solutions to that issue. What we had is our initial cost, that's, I mean, the initial cost, this is a pretty short number, and initial cost is higher, we do not, but if we wanted to rent portable air conditioners to cover Flosk, like Western, it will cost just over $52,000, except for the force.
It's for about two months.
Or eight weeks.
Yeah, probably eight weeks.
So we could probably, obviously save additional monies by, you know, going, August 15 to September 15, was the way that this summer was going, it was gonna be 90 degrees again in October, so, try to plan for this, this is our best shot in the dark, so, just trying to get some initial more feedback at this time, whether or not this, we need to sharpen our pencils, trying to get a better price, or in the past, we've had cooling stations in the buildings, just like normal, which we've been cycling, in and out of the library media centers, water bottles, those sorts of things, but again, we're certain we can have, so.
Are we found, do we have a contract, or can we, you know, go by, you know, basis, that, is that?
Well, I think we got, you can go by, you know, you can use basis, and, and, well, I don't believe we're bound to a certain number of days. I'm kind of, I'm looking at this as a not-to-exceed type of idea, as we keep an eye on, on the weather.
Probably not.
No, but I imagine it's, it's, at some point, if you don't like, you know, the prices are rising, you know, on us, right? If, well, so, August is hot, these things are gonna start to manage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, we would like to vote them in, because it's gonna also take some time to set up, if we want to go like a first-class school.
And we can verify that there's no penalty for us saying, you know, we're good with that, you know, October's gonna be cool, that we don't, you know, we can verify that there would be no penalty for us pulling out.
Yes.
Do we have a, an idea of the impact that the warranty has on education, other than the, would seem obvious, like, for example, you say that, you know, these air conditioners are going to, you know, increase the initial school experience, you know, learning by, by, you know, a significant amount, you know, is, is it something where, and I'm saying this as if we spent the last question list, my teachers were cooking, and actually specifically where I am now, the last four years, I mean, really, you know, really hot, but I'm not trying to sound unsympathetic, but, do we have any thing that we can sort of say, if we do this, we'll see increases here, or?
I don't know, very good, it's evolved the way the issue.
Maslow?
Okay.
So, it was a, it was a.
Just Maslow, basically.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, that's, I just wanted to ask the question.
Sure.
I'm totally supportive of this, it, again, it's, it's awful expensive, so, but we're gonna, part of the prescription that we're doing, or considering for next year, is going to revenue this, correct?
Yep.
The first two weeks of August, where do the teachers stand on this, you know, are they really, are they in classrooms like all day getting ready, or are they just kind of stop by for a few hours, I don't know what's.
Oh, well, they probably, they probably don't know, I mean, once the buildings are clean, they'll pop them out, and a few things, we, since we did have a shortened summer, teachers will leave things up on their walls, and, so, you know, a few things will certainly fall, and they'll replace them, but realistically, popping in here and there to get things set up, the first two institute days are offsite, which we're gonna capture in kids' hearts, so, those will be in air-conditioned spaces, the third day will be in partnership, which is air-conditioned now, then the teachers will be back in their buildings for late morning afternoon.
So they're not going to revolt, we suggest they not have air conditioning during the talks?
I would think so, though, I mean, they'll spend about four hours in the buildings, quote-unquote, you know, for the start of the school year, but some teachers will come in in July, that's just what they do, because they're dedicated, and they're, they want those rooms perfect for their kids, so, be just like we asked, we get not getting air conditioning in hospitals and western areas before that, Heather Hill.
Yeah, I think altering the schedule just completely, so we can save just a little more, totally for quality. Have you used portable air conditioning?
We've used a few of them, right, Scott, we've used a few of these portable air conditioners before, are we using here?
I, I've used them in my last district, we haven't used them here, yeah.
So, my experience with them, and I'm not, not, I'm not that far into the networks, but, they're noisy, they can be noisy, and so, I don't know what, if anything, is to be cool, but then you can't hear, it's just as bad as being hot in here, so, it is just something to, I don't know what, if anything, to be done about it.
Go, give us, it's a big, we can grab one, give it over a little more.
Yeah.
Sure. See how loud it is.
And as far as noise level, it wouldn't be any louder than a regular UNIvent operating in that classroom anyhow.
Okay.
I know the Starbucks, I, near my office always puts one in the summer, and it never seems to actually do anything.
Right.
Just blows hot air, so, I, I think our students and teachers, as well as I, would be sort of disappointed if that was engaged, we spent $60,000 on the DCX at our action. Do we have the electrical support to put in like 20?
Uh, we're gonna have to, if this is a go, we're gonna have to do a couple of tests to make sure that we're okay with that, you know, we don't have 20 outlets in each classroom, and the ones that are there are being used already, so, we're gonna have to do a little test to make sure that we'd be okay with that. You know, we can't put two on the same circuit, you know, sometimes classrooms are piped through the wall, and they're on the same circuit, so we would have to work that out.
Do you know how soon the tests can be done?
Uh, sure, I could probably do it next week, I mean, we would just bring in one or two units, and we, we try it. There is some setup involved for each unit, a couple hours to set up each one, we have to exhaust them, and then we have to have, we have to drain them also, so.
So that would be affecting the windows, right?
Uh, we would exhaust it to the, the plant on the drop ceiling above, that's what we'd do. For security, sure, we could do that, but that would lead to some security issues, so I didn't wanna, all right.
Group.
Uh, the drop ceiling.
The drop ceiling.
All right.
So the, the HGA's.
The rack.
Or? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
We said the plant on the ceiling, 20, okay.
Right, there's, there's a space between the, the roof deck and the drop ceiling, there's about three feet that, that we would exhaust it up there, and then there's reliefs above that, all right.
And the condensation pipe?
Uh, well, a lot of these classrooms have sinks in the back rooms, or, so we can do that, or we may have to just manually just drain them every day. I'd like to put them into the sinks, of course.
So we have some additional information, too, we can go to pricing, noise level, power, and talk to Scott, Fran, continue, we've got the best air conditioner.
Make financials and estimated year-end financials.
So you have the make financials, I just wanted to give you kind of a real quick, you know, back-of-the-napkin type thing, our biggest issue, and the finance committee will talk about this later on this week, is, we had a lot of tax refunds this year, a lot, collection percentages are down, we're gonna take a look at that, I actually got some information from Rob Posey across Bloom Township, collections are down, probably not to anyone's real shock, I mean, a lot of people are, are, you know, putting in appeals on, on their tax bills, so we're starting to see that, but that being said, we've got about another $800,000 sitting at the comptroller's office, and don't know whether they're gonna be paid out by the end of the year or not, we're hoping that they will, but the state for, or the state is holding on to about $800,000 of the state. Less construction, including some of conferences, we are still looking at a balanced operating budget for year-end compared to 2019, we are in the process of finishing paying bills and running summer payrolls, but so far it's looking like we'll need a balanced operating budget, which was ours.
So are lower tax revenues being primarily from money bills on commercial property, or?
I think, no, I, I believe they are, crossing for residential as well, we're starting to feel the impact, we used to have about a 96, 97% collection rate, right now it's looking close to 93, and a lot of that is not so much that the taxes aren't being paid upfront, but then the bills are coming on the backside and reducing the ultimate rate.
Do you have any insight yet as to whether various changes, when I'm accounting assessment is, or any kind of, or is that really a big problem?
It's going to impact, no doubt, on, I am still unclear as to how it's going to impact, I'm very curious to see how it impacts the north side of the person. I tend to think that it's going to impact, but negatively on the residents, that's my gut feeling, but I haven't seen any evidence to bring you that information yet.
Any other questions? When will the first, my next meeting be?
Thursday? Tuesday, 27?
Okay, Five Maps.
So this is the last product in the suite of forecast, but I will tell you, after living transportation bus route purgatory for the last five days, it, it, it occurred to me that this would be a tremendous, be a tremendous help. So what Five Maps does is it basically will overlay your student demographic information onto a Google map, so it would literally drop a pin where every single child lives, what grade they're in, all kinds of demographic factors. For me personally, what I looked at and said, man, wouldn't it be great if I could drop a pin on my school, and then do a radius at a mile and a half, and then I know any child who lived here either isn't supposed to be being transported, or should be paying, or isn't a hazard crossing. I have no easy way to do that right now, with Five Maps, I could do that literally in seconds, and that would be a tremendous help to get started with the routing in August. There's a lot of other things that Five Maps can do, I have seen where they have started combining the geography with the test scores as well, to see if you start coming up with any trends, there's been a whole lot of really cool things that they've been doing with Five Maps. The other thing that we've been talking about is we start looking at really where your class sizes are, if you wanted to start playing with boundaries, you could easily do that in Five Maps, too, you can just simply move like the boundary over and see how many children would be affected, and what grade, and how that would influence, and how it would impact schools. So it's something that you can absolutely start using for conversations, and those kinds of things, so, cost on this would be about $1,500, since Dr. Smith got $500 off by calling and going. really hard.
Do you think that for others?
Yeah, we try.
Yeah.
No, we're, we're actually doing a presentation with Forecast 5 at the 2018 conference in November. Of course, we shot the Zach, it's a tech. Doctor Bux, we're gonna let press on our pilot dive usage and how we use that to inform our school for the planning work. And it was, it was very simple and we had no problem giving us a.
Any other questions or comments? Speed classroom rental at Heather Hill?
Just an annual conversation that we had. We received about $12,000 from the Speed Co-op for them to review our classrooms at Heather Hill. Just see if we wait for that.
Any questions? Amendments to school staff in agreement?
Sure. The only difference here is the company changed its name, and so it's different than what's on our actual contract. So this just acknowledges that the company changed their name, does not change any of the terms. So they went from Health Pro Heritage to Health Pro Pediatrics.
Any questions? How many? Heather Hill entrance.
So at our last meeting, after we approved gold, we had the HVAC projects at Western and at Boston Hills, and then the two alternates, one being a natural gas generator, the other being the Western avenue entrance. We also talked about asking them to give us back, we have a little look at Heather Hill. So we have that here. They're looking at somewhere between $600,000 and $700,000 if we want to reallocate our existing space, and somewhere in the area of 1.2 million dollars if we wanted to just completely have a new office off the front of the building. There are a few crude drawings included with the packet. Essentially, what would happen is reclaims on that kindergarten space, particularly basically that whole first classroom, maybe a little bit more to be the front office. Main entry moves to the front. Then the current office gets walled up and it becomes a kindergarten classroom. It's okay, except there also is a few windows on that side of the building, so that's the agreement of what they look like. There are also, could be other options, but again, for our direction, we didn't want them going too far. The project was going to cost us planning money and we weren't sure and we weren't good for the work. So here's where we currently are, like, the board direction on our next steps is something that we'd like to hold on to, is something we'd like to move forward with. We do have our strategic plan coming up. Obviously, that begins in the fall. After that, it's a really good opportunity for us to talk about construction in general and make sure where we're spending our dollars is aligned to our instructional focus, to our budget focus, et cetera. So we'll take direction to the board on how we want to move forward with this. If we did want to move forward again, it would bring you approval. I think, believe the $700,000 includes all the soft costs, engineering, construction, et cetera, with a 10% contingency, but it's probably the 70, 600 to 800,000 dollar range based on our previous.
So much of the diagram, so that's our fourth one. Can I ask, where do we stand on that? So both seven years are coming up with a, a plan, I'm sorry, or something, why are you kind of holding it up here? Are we doing that or?
So we put that at all. My recommendation is to do the strategic plan first. And then if we want to engage them, engage them on the long, long-term construction planning, that's probably February, March.
How long will it take if we add the tuition?
I don't think that. Because we have our plan from school too, which says, hey, the boiler and warranty is gonna be delivered in 2027, and all these other pieces, those are unspoken. So this becomes a, okay, well, you could have, you may have had a security issue and, you know, because all the classrooms in Heather Hill were better than Full Off, we're just making this up. But at Boston Hills, because you have non-tile projectors as opposed to projectors on cars, here's how much it would be to create consistency.
Well, I guess one word by head for long-term is that, you know, each building has a long-term plan, the community, et cetera. Realistically, you know, we do our bond issues on tenure, so major, certain major buildings, the idea of the, um, on the different types of spaces, might go out for a quarter, a year. My concern about this is it feels very much like, so we've identified A, and it's just sort of like something actually, your house is something need, and because I don't have a central building long-term, my, that building, um, you know, the, the security that we've identified is significant, but I suspect if you just develop that, that whole falls together and said, you want to spend $600,000 now, we want to wait till we have a plan for the whole building, you're excited about. Well, I don't know whether they've come out, why would come out, but, so I guess the client management, are we going to be at a place where we have a vision for the building and that whole, um, staying in that next year or we?
I think the next calendar year from today is, is that, I don't know how we move forward without some sort of a plan. We talked a little bit about the silver, on the fund balance, having a clear process for that. Anything that comes out of that would probably be.
That's supposed to be.
Uh, 2020, sorry, that's what, that's what's paid for that. I would say like next year at this time, we probably have a very solid plan, towards our aggressive strategic planning process, kind of stays around that December-June timeline, engage for two to three months with the community, and the next steps for construction. We're not, we're bound, I mean, except our, because our, our explosive floor, but to Ken's point, we're looking, you know, summer '21, we're summer '22.
What is it about the strategic plan that you need to order? To ask ourselves, what is the physical meaning of it?
I would say to the floor, the building to manage it. And to engage the community consistently enough to, that they don't get fatigue too. What commitments are we going to make? Alright, so, you know, as we, as we move into our data conversation, if we're going to talk about, we're serious about catch-up, right? We're, we're committed to it. We're serious about the effects of, of poverty on education for our schools. Okay, where is our zero to three program? And that's gonna cost them a lot of school, right? And so as we have, as we make those commitments of the type of school district that we want to be, it'll affect our system.
So shouldn't we, so conscious of that, why not combine the process, right? So we're continuing the process. We're gonna be, you're gonna have a group of parents, the extra parents who are at the school, this is what I want from the school. I mean, capital is a big part of that, property capital is a big part of that. And maybe, maybe we just can't pull together that size, but why not gather that, that property, continue to find, have the whole folks in the bedroom and add their questions to various questions?
Sure.
And I, I think it serves more than, it's more than just information gathering for us. It's also part of the conversation, so if the parents need to show up, you know, if they show up and then like they spend an hour talking and hearing feedback about test scores, they tend to also come to our meetings and say, or like classes, I want their classes. Why haven't you considered how much has been announced? And no, it hasn't. And so I think what also, I hope, that something like that would encourage the community members to participate in the strategic planning process and think about the multiple dimensions of the problems or challenges. I don't understand what you're asking.
We need to fill it out tomorrow. You don't look, efficiency is the place to live. If there's a way to do that effectively, adding about bringing your information back to the board, you know, however much time. Essentially, we just pay for the time that the architects and engineers to sit there and facilitate that type of work. If there's a way to do it, that's a line.
You think that this could have, I guess, so I, we're gonna tell for our, right? Security is fair to have our, the stuff want to do with Parker, the stuff in West End. And ultimately, I think the guy, our decisions, you know, we kind of need a policy for, okay, we can't do everything, if we're trying to get her, you know. But, but, uh, but, you know, we can't do it all and, you know, it's hard to make a more decision as to what the test coverage is without the.
Well, and what else I can't say is that for Heather Hill, this is the mission for a while. So this is not something we're just gonna do. And so I, I do understand organization deficiency, but I think that's one of the reasons why we're wanting to present this now, to figure out how we're gonna talk about it for the long-term budgeting. And if we're going to go ahead and move forward, like you said, how do we do so? But just letting you know that this is actually for a.
Well, I think career is a priority. I hope I really, I mean, well, I have a long-term plan, so that's really important. So, um, but is this, you know, so is this more important than the issue in several? It might be. But we're, we're, you know, we have this timing issue that really be part of the progress that's been started, especially during this optimization, you know, now. Then, then related, when related to the fits of the high and cost spiral and, so that's a challenge. We, so, but I like your things about that, of course, consensus is this is sort of good now. My second question is, can't we just play that a little? Where's the $50,000 option? Or, I mean, if there's gonna be a security problem, something be a security problem. Well, I mean, I would love to have, I'd love to have a next year a goal that Heather Hill, you know, are excited about at the end of the fall. I don't feel like anyone would be excited.
Well, I agree with the, be in the next strategic plan. I think there is no clear mission. So I completely agree with that, but we're still not, let's say this gets put on the back burner until we have a more clear goal or wants and needs versus what needs. We're still not fixing the, the security issue. The, uh, the first, literally, odd sight when I did my building tour that I noticed. So if we're gonna put this on the back burner and wait six months, however, along the year until we have the strategic plan, what are we doing meantime? Okay, I like your idea. Is there a $50,000 option? Are we gonna pay, random thought of my brain, a security guard to stand there? I mean, what are other options if we want to wait? Because something has to give. Because I don't want that entrance the way it is.
So a second set of doors and a clone, gunning hand pass, right? It's a lot cheaper than what that is. And this, I guess, is my buy. $600,000 or 1.2 million? I'm not really excited about doing this anymore. If you've got solutions to the security concern, have it that are major technical tanks. I don't know.
Well, what I'll also say is, is I think there will be questions posed to the architect. It was with the intent of finding what are potential solutions. And in looking at the existing condition, there wasn't just putting in another door solution. This is, this has been an issue that's been, became looked at previously. So I think that's why that was presented, because that's not fixed the problem.
Just for history's sake, the additional doors have been added. So those double doors that are in there were added for security because this actually was a issue, so.
Which, so I'm just going, remind me, one on the left, of course, is that the door? Of course, if you want on the right.
I don't have a.
Is it the ones after the kindergarten room?
I'll say.
It's got, it's got. Okay. So the front door though, from, from where you're pinpointing, where, where's the front end? Oh, right, right. Here, so that's door one, the second door, the rest of the bill, that's how many, the rest of the bill, second door.
These are the ones that Dr. Smith said were in.
With the second door, rest of the bill, right there, is that normally locked? Or is that just like a foyer door?
Yes, this, yes, this is our one. This is the buzz, this is where they buzz in.
You know, the cheap solution here is additional IP cameras and additional access so people can see. And that's the, right, the solution that gets us into a larger discussion about the layout of Heather Hill. Right, and, you know, it's a hassle. I mean, this, the, the Heather Hill entrance and the Heather Hill entrance for longer than we've been here. I don't know if anybody wants it, probably would recommend changes, would like to see those in context of a larger discussion.
Yeah, I think I, um, I agree with Cam. I think, um, it is, as, well, as with what you just said, I think that, um, this is a part of a much larger Heather Hill conversation that we need to have, regarding space utilization and population and all of that. And so I would rather not, um, half-step this. I'd rather make a $600,000 or a million dollar construction change based on this being part of a larger strategic plan for Heather Hill. So if there is a alternative to deal with security issues, then, um, I think I would certainly be open to listening to that. But I think the construction piece, um, I would feel more comfortable if it was part of a larger discussion around what the overall needs are, short and long-term in all of our buildings. I also think, so residents do have planning fatigue, they can get that, right? And so I do think, um, it's worth having a discussion tomorrow, seeing whether or not, at the same time, we are having, going through the strategic planning process, if there can also be, you know, mold happening, um, you know, meetings on top of that. And it can be second group, I mean, however they want to structure it, because I do remember when they came, I specifically asked about whether you're gonna be engaging the process. So, um, what comes out of that should absolutely inform what goes into the strategic plan versus the strategic plan informing, um, the community engagement session that we'll have afterwards. So I think if we have them together, that would be ideal.
But I'd like to avoid, though, this situation that we're, we're addressing now. Hey, we want to turn for a century, like, got it? Let's put in all these smart boards. For sure, that's exactly what we should do, but there's no why behind it. Right? And if you do these out of order, you could end up with a solution in search of a problem that can be very costly, right? And then it makes other decisions for you. So let's find out where we can organize. David brought up a couple of things just on that. The cheaper side, also, what's that security look like? We can talk to the secretaries, principal, PTO, and find out, right? What are the issues here around this at Heather Hill? It's primarily visibility. You know, the small offices at Western Avenue, you can still crane your neck around and see if a mom is outside or a dad is, you know, waiting for a child or the bus finally pulled up to be waiting to set the kids on. That option doesn't exist at Heather. So, you know, outside visibility, we should, but we can talk to the groups and find out what are the other things right now that are really pressing, and see if we can get fixed and get discussions.
Yeah, I mean, because outside visibility, that's an issue with Western.
True.
I mean, so, um, but I think we need to have this discussion in large, in the context of what do all of our buildings need, construction-wise for the long term, but I think if we can address the security and the mission.
You will have something on the team?
Just, uh, there's still no windows on the west side of the, uh, of the proposed office in the neighborhood. I know there's some that are facing north.
Right.
But, you know, just talking about the, you know, maybe of being able to see outside, you still can't see.
Again, I would, I would not assume that to be a finished external drive.
Okay.
That's not part of that wall.
I'm still trying to digest in terms, and, you know, I realize that, you know, literally when they build these, buildings, they're really taking in terms of, there was a big bomb blast, you know, and, you know, from Russia, you know, you couldn't, you know, how could these, this, bend ourselves because there's, you know, there is no, it's like a defense institution, it's like a bunker, literally. But, you know, moving forward, and I guess this, this goes to the, the larger identity question of the, you know, what's, what's Heather Hill going to be? I think that, um, it's, that, um, I could agree that this needs to, I think it would be, do need like a, a, a plan as we discussed, that could be on the lower end, but we should look in terms of, you know, what is the? in terms of, you know, what is the, I would, the longer vision. Short and long. Short and long. How short and how long?
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one quick question. So I remember we were having a conversation about the population of Heatherhill, which the class was not doing that. It do, is that still something that will need to be addressed?
Yeah, we absolutely have to look at all of our buildings frankly. That's where five maps can come in as well. At the different populations in each building. But, okay, well, good job, Heatherhill parents, really, given that we're not about community registration, we have enough community leaders to open up two sections at community, which is really kind of that, that banner target for, for grade levels. Frankly, at the start of this summer, before that, we were running in one section. That's, that's a challenge. So right now, there, we expect them to be healthy numbers, probably somewhere around 18 when it's all said and done, which will be beautiful to hear the last thing. But yeah, I think it's worth, we do need to look at numbers of all of our buildings and, you know, Western's bursting in certain parts and think about again what we're trying to do with the type of education that we're trying to buy. So this would be good with that process.
Even, I'm sorry, even the utilization of this space. Yeah, I mean, this really, I mean, it's, so we need a very comprehensive, um, of look at all of 161 and a brand that will accommodate that financially, so.
From what we guys want to add, how can we put this into this scope? One of the things that might be possible with your work, special areas, that one, how is that, one structure, or things in that nature, it's tricky, how long it could say. I know it's going to be part of the strategic plan.
It's all good.
Thank you. Residency update.
I just wanted to bring this back. We've been working on a number of different investigations as the report says, I won't read that to you, but we verified that one family that we investigated, those are signs inside the district, four families do not, and we need additional surveillance on a number of families as well. So, um, working with, you know, Chicago investigative services, but producing ones so far, you know, they work closely with our law firm, and so they know exactly what is expected in these types of situations. That's why we went to this group, because our last vendor would give us reports we could use, and so we can spend money on investigations and not be able to move forward with removing those families. So we are, obviously, at the residency checking process now, especially with registration. So we use all of this information. We have a number of families that we're checking on, we'll, obviously, once this school year starts, we'll get that list up and running again. If we do find families we can remove that from this one.
Can you remind, for, is there a process for, um, residents to report suspected, I just can't remember.
I don't know if we have an official process. It typically happens, you know, if I'm in a hospital or, you know, somewhere, hey, did you know that I see this car picking up kids in the neighborhood or a cop, someone else? Sometimes it's a day on the way to work, I'll sit with you because we can spend a few minutes together because they work nights, and then you're off to school. Other times it's somebody coming in from outside the community who's, who's used a fake address or other documents like that. We can, I mean, that's a simple slope. But I would say, I would, I would, I think what we can do better is encourage people to either call us, call Fran, call Courtney, call myself, or reach out to your building principal if you have a concern, you know, to tell a tale. But the other day, it's services, right? We, our property taxes go towards providing world-class education for our kids. We have additional kids who don't belong and don't contribute to that kind of collected or collective agreement between each other in our, in our several communities, and that's a challenge. It takes away from kids who are home.
So I don't think this is any attention on my part to the $4,000 we spent on investigations, but can we also send them a note to draw on that?
We do provide them. It's part of our fact.
Yeah, well, I just want to go back to Chicago and say, oh, they'll go to Flossmar, they'll tell me that they'll kick you out and they'll send you to them. I mean, um, Logan was in, my son Logan was in Camden, Purdue, two weeks ago, and he met a girl, so I.
I think you kind of worry about school age, Jeff.
You know, I mean, so this is, I don't know if it's just a few families that are here, tell friends what's going on, but, um, this seems to be, you know, we have trouble grasping numbers, but this is, uh, seems to be prevalent issue that eight families or four confirmed or suspected are big enough numbers to say it's a community issue. So good work and please keep up.
Yeah, good luck.
Question. I know last year we had, I think, you weren't satisfied with that sort of system kind of trajectory. One of my questions is, cost-wise, are these numbers comparable to the budget? Second part, I also know that, um, at one point we had a, let's say, range of families that we thought made it suspect, and something they had, it was like 20 to 30, so is this a result of all those? So everybody else is kind of checked out. Can you just give me a reminder of what they did back?
Sure. Cost comparability, I have to get back to you, but I would tell you we were just nickel and dime, and so I think that's probably why it's not on, you know, first floor. You know, I worked on this family, it was a quarter on hill, we were there night and morning. It was probably about in this range, and we paid about $800 to $1,200 per family with the investigation, because remember, you said, you know, five o'clock in the morning, you had to be, you know, 11 o'clock at night. So I'd say the cost is probably close. Numbers wise, essentially, we just collected, we had the secretaries reach out. Who do you, who do you think? Because that's the other thing, you know, probably you're late every day, what's going on? Well, we're going to come out and grab ourselves. Well, that's right, right? And so our building administrative assistants are kind of on the close front lines. I can check our initial list and get back to you, but we have, according to what I know, Courtney, you can correct me, every day that we had, basically the rest of it's just get out of it.
Nobody's thoughtful whatever it is.
Currently, yes.
Any other chance to talk about this, what is in your lap, any statement?
No, not yet, not yet. But we'll, we'll, I'll have to answer for you soon.
Any other questions regarding residency? Do you like more topics? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. But any other, okay, so I, we're.
Oh, okay, sure.
We'll talk about gifted education too. I don't think, uh, we will probably keep the, the 15th a little bit light, remember you have our board receipt for 7 on that evening.
And we'll add the security for Heatherhill. Update.
Sure. I think that's enough.
Yeah, I mean, some, something.
Absolutely, no problems. And then for crisis management, just as we are, we're looking at the 18, 19 school year, the work we did, we had a couple of cove yellows, we have, um, Jacinda, some that were more serious than others. Always try to reflect on those situations after they happen, come up with our best possible solutions moving forward. I think it's time to put a little bit more work into that. I'm assuming that unfortunately, when the school crises really picked up over the last 10 or 15 years, some work was done in the district in this area, it's time to do a refresh. Especially as we put new people on, as we have a closer working relationship with the village of Flossmar, and who's made those connections in Homewood, we have communications person now who certainly would have a, a clear role in, in a crisis situation. We have not done active crisis drills in our buildings, which we, we need to, obviously, we're on a true district, not the students are there, but in the past, we have done those active shooter drills in our buildings with adults, because it is a different feeling and it puts you in a very uncomfortable situation with one if you've experienced it before. So there's not a lot, um, in this site, but I would say the responsibility is certainly outweigh a small monetary sum, but looking at the type of work that we need to get done, aligning all of the crisis plans, working with our various local municipalities and service providers to make sure just that we're doing everything in the best possible way so that if a situation happens, everyone knows how to respond, everyone's in the right spot, we keep our kids and our staff in pursuit.
So is this, um, Fran, is this what, um, presents the, this was the role he did? Yeah, and we have this, and, yeah, I mean, how long has he been on?
Three.
Yeah, three, yeah, okay. So definitely, um, I think the other piece that's missing in here is, um, communication to, uh, parents and residents upon the process.
And as a sub note to that, what we do about social media, uh, seems to have a cast rate, small problems. If you get a whole class, you know, parents wrong.
So will you bring the recommendation back at the next, I'm wondering, like, how soon can we get this started?
As soon as, well, I mean, you know, I have a feeling, we have to do the work in right? There's just not a chance to recognize something that's lost, so.
So in the, I don't know, the principal. You propose, so I guess you propose that, and, yeah, a lot of this stuff is very, um, and, you know, I guess it, it seems to be that the person sort of responsible for shooting or know a little bit of organizing, if you're building level, necessarily, maybe those are my.
Well, I mean, look at it this way, so, you know, depending on the type of crisis, you have this from the back of the recommendations you do, which is incident management, everyone has a, the building principal goes here, education person that's here, we have all those different pieces. This person will at least coordinate that initial work, and then based on the building, kind of play our, your situation, these are the plans. To Cam's point, we do have to get those crisis teams underground in each building, that has to, just as part of the role to respond to your situations.
And I just want to add one thing, again, to Michelle's point about, uh, fortunately, unfortunately, we kind of watched, we were listening to it, placed these narratives out, unfortunately, at the point of one, and, um, the community responded that it responded well, or whatever. In so terms of politics, security, I don't know, that's an education process, I don't know that the political side, I'm sure of that, but I think definitely you can examine that in a lot of detail. Second point, I don't know, also how to tie that into the media itself and what information they can be provided so that they can come to us with, with information disseminated, how that plugs into this, so, and just want to make sure we do, kind of, we have.
Sure. These situations are always under fulfilling for the year. Always, and, you know, part of that challenge becomes what we are able to share, and frankly, especially when we talk about crises, a lot of it is not open session, it's closed session because it deals with how we respond in a potentially harmful situation. And so as we do keep a lot of that close to the vest, people feel unfulfilled, to Dan's point, and I think that's a very, we're, we have to kind of wait the end of that direction because our, the communications person, our expert, tells us to do that.
Yeah, I went to quite a few workshops on, on this over the last several years, and that is the one area that you have to be very careful about what you're sharing, because you don't want the wrong people to use that information. And that can be very frustrating to your community, because they want that information and was going to happen because my child was in the building, but at the same time, it could actually put your child at, at a larger, you know, degree of harm if that is shared and it got to the wrong hand. So you're right, it's, it's a very frustrating piece, um, but we have to remember what the ultimate goal is when you start thinking about those things and what we share and what we know.
My own personal, I was actually going to build on what you said earlier, and, uh, I think, you know, and I've gone through a lot of these for the last six years too, and certainly in my, my other path that I were, as a teacher, you know, I've been part of these as well. But, and I think that, uh, social media is, is one of these things that is just sort of tipping over where, and I think the big concern a lot of parents had was that they're getting instantaneous and erroneous reports from their kids, you know, live on the scene, and, you know, it really kind of overran our kind of protocols that we had in place. It didn't anticipate that every single kid who has, you know, four to $800 phone in their class, which they're not supposed to have, are going to get on and immediately, you know, text their parents and say, bring me home, I'm in danger, which is, you know, not, I mean, a natural thing for kids to want to do with parents if they feel threatened. But I, I think that, uh, that is definitely something moving forward, we have to have a very clear plan to deal with, because all parents that I've talked to have been upset is, it's entirely centered in, my kid was freaking out and they were calling me, and then when I, eventually, when one of the parents, in case of someone I know, decided, oh, I'm just going to go and pick him up, and everyone said, no, don't do that, they got there and it was a monster. And so it was just something that, you know, I don't, it never really experienced before, and, you know, now we have to sort of, you know, pump the game, uh, game plan in the middle of a new game. So I think that.
So that's probably an example of, of very unfulfilling situations.
Yes.
Well, is the response is probably, you have to pick your kid up from the church, or you have to pick your kid up from, right? Because I, I can't imagine, and I don't really know, really illegal situations. I can't imagine having a process to pick up 350 kids at the same time and not enough to finish.
Right.
That, that isn't run through kind of like a NIMs situation where? Yes, absolutely. Our kids go to Flossmar Community Church, we go to Parker, that's where you go, and we know who's there because that's where our director of special education kicks in, and she is the one that manages the outflow of kids to families in our classes, right? So we can absolutely add to those plans, but again, that's an, that's an unfulfilling response when you want to get your kid, or saying, we're going to release them from Flossmar Community Church at 4:00 p.m. this afternoon, once we can verify it, we have to lose it.
Right, but I think that needs to be, you know, a group expectation that we're all have the same expectations.
Sure.
I can envision myself as a teacher saying, help. As for fact, I remember a 9/11 happened in New York area. This is a, a conversation that came up, like, what do you do now? You know, where our kids, some kids had cell phones, we're calling their parents, who were watching the news, they were showing up at school, and it was, it was one of those things people had no idea what to do, because this had never happened. And now we've built a lot of, um, policies based on that 19 years ago, or almost 20 years ago, where it hasn't succeeded, but really this new wave, uh, this coming wave, which is multiplied by kids access to these things, which are not educationally helping them to class anyway, it's just, you know, it's a, there's been a cell phone policy type. So you're lucky.
Yeah, hopefully. I wonder if it's whoever's wanting to do this, you know, the specific, so it's a very important. I don't feel like the administrators feel like they should be more thoughtful than we may, because in hindsight, you should have told everyone, you know? And so we definitely know very delicately, and so we sort of had a fairly delicate but accurate message out there. Unfortunately, the sort of hysterical message from the community who had totally wrong information overrode all of that, and, and so, you know, but I would, I would hope that, you know, our administrators have had a little bit of, some more from us, you know, having thought through this, that they can just help theirs, because in hindsight, that's a situation.
Because in hindsight, that's a situation. And that's what should.
And in a lot of the areas of my administrative profession, crisis is prevalent. And there's always a tendency to it. But one of the things that is a key component to it is having a spokesperson who will immediately say something to go ahead with that, you know, with a notice of something said. Kind of quiet it down. And so. If you're trying to mark me, but that's how, that's one of those things that happens.
True. Absolutely. I got to make that.
Well, I think all of your comments just highlight the importance of, the, the, the important, the important piece of having, first of all, having a plan. And then communicating what that plan is to the community. Or kids' absence of the community not knowing what a plan is, whether they like the plan or not. So the plan could absolutely say, no, you cannot pick up your child from the school. You will pick them up. Right. So, but it's absent of knowing what the plan is, is what creates all of this area. So I think we're all centered in the same thing, which is part of this plan needs to be, leads to include what the communication piece is.
I'll echo that is being done for their safety and for nothing more. When you drive that all, like, we cannot be releasing children just because, yes, there are children, but mother in this building, there is a responsibility of the administrator's charge. And that is the bottom line.
So you don't have to tell us who, but do you have?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So we're ready to approve whenever we need to approve on that. Cause that's.
This means we'll have to schedule to come back with our data. There's nowhere else.
Okay, was there anything else on the live board topics? Okay. All right. So we will now go into the data discussion, which was tied in a. Yeah, I'm sorry. So before you.
Thank you.
Okay. But before you start, I, I want to just at least acknowledge that the board did receive, as we always do in our workback, all the information that is presented during the board. And so I know there were lots of questions regarding the data piece. And there will continue to be questions and we should document those and feed those to Dr. Smith so that he can field those out. So there may, we will leave this discussion not having answers to all of our questions. That's just the bottom line. But I also will say that historically, we have had a habit in this district from shying away from having tough conversations about data. And so the goal here is for our, the board to be pumped with as enough information as possible so that we can strategize on how we can better support your team going forward. And we don't, can't do that if we don't have all the information needed to be able to make those types of decisions. So all our questions will not be answered, but we do have a new instruction and curriculum committee in, which I'm very excited about. So I know this conversation will filter over and that as well. This is, this will be an online conversation. And so we will continue to ask questions, but, you know, we're, we're not looking for gotcha moments.
Here is the.
But we do want to have just an honest conversation about what is and what isn't, and then how we together support you guys moving forward.
Thank you. And we did add some additional information just as clarification and looking through the questions and pulling out some themes from today. I believe I'll get to that in just a moment. But we'll start by talking about the five essential status. So every year, we take the Illinois Public Survey, which is a school culture and climate survey given by the state of Illinois, which informs the, is one of the pieces that informs our RCE rating as well as it goes into the score report card. It asks survey questions around culture and climate from students, parents, and teachers, administrators who do not take the survey. The reason for that is that it's survey the results in form of the leaders score. So it's again, based on research, identifies five key components, components of moving schools forward. The research from the University of Chicago shows that the schools that are doing well on the five essentials have a 10 times greater chance of happening in an effective school. So effective leaders, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, involve families, and supportive environment. Right now, the five essential survey is preliminary. The results will go public June 30th. And that will be the date that we've been told so far that it will be distributed on the score report card. So the overall ratings that a school can receive are well organized, organized, moderately organized, not yet organized. It's kind of like, how many different ways can you say sort of organized? But, but just taking a look at this year's results, we feel like it showed some really great growth at our schools. Our schools that in 1718 were well organized, were just not highest rating. I feel really bad. I'm a lucky enough to be back this year. But our schools that were in 1718, well organized, maintained that status of being well organized. And then we saw growth in our schools. At Parker, 1718, we were at not yet organized and we moved up one level to partially organized.
I'm good.
Sorry. And at Western Avenue, in 1718, we were at moderately organized and we have moved to organized. Overall strengths, okay, just the growth. So we saw ratings change at our schools, involve families, size of a piece that our schools typically do really well with collaborative practices and professional development, opportunities for improvement. Again, this is overall at any given school, there were, these could have been strengths and opportunities depending on the school and as well as the category, school commitment and supportive environment. So I just wanted to follow the theory of questions for five essentials.
Were you satisfied with the rate of returns for those that completed it?
Yeah, we've done a pretty big job over the past few years of getting those responses. If you recall in previous presentations, if you don't get 20% parent participation, we will not get a parent, parents' report for this date. The past two years, we have better exceeded that 20% of each of our schools. We really push it and do whatever we can to get as many people to fill it out while they're exactly required to pick up or just catching parents at the door. Our schools did a great job of that. And our students are a captive audience. If you will, if you sort of schedule it, you're going to take it. And then our, our teachers do a great job, 90% or higher of our teachers complete the survey.
What percentage of parents provided it for those?
I'd have to check the numbers. I know that it was above 20% at each building. I believe this year, our, most of our schools well exceeded 20%. I believe Parker was our, our lowest percentage, but they still met the mark within the survey window.
It would be great when we do this next time. Just to strategize a bit, we're going to be creative to increase our participation in the survey. You know, I don't know, it's a whole kind of fun competition. I mean, whatever it takes. I mean, to get 20%, which is what's needed to get the family report is awesome. But 20% relatively speaking is right. So, you know, so we can creatively think about how we can increase that number. And I think if parents, families just understand the importance of this data and how we use the data, that might also increase our numbers. So.
We, yeah, absolutely. We are at even our parent participation rate is, it increases every year. But absolutely, to your point, we can always continue to be more creative and do more.
Yeah. How long does it take to, I'm sorry, so how long does it take? I can't remember how long it takes to complete the survey.
It's about 10 to 15 minutes. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if they're even like.
But you have to do one per child per school. And so, you know, you could end up sitting up for an hour for all three surveys.
And that does, to your point, Dr. Smith, that does impact Parker because typically parents have students at the elementary school and students at Parker. So they do the elementary school and they assume they're done. And you have to sort of remind, do Parker also, there's two there as well.
What time, what time of year do they typically take the survey?
Uh, this year, we're in January. It's typically January, February.
Is there a, is there, you know, I had to do it as a, years ago, I did it at Light Night School. And they, they captured something that you were putting in anyway. You were kind of like, ral, did you take it yet?
Sure.
And, but they made it fun, actually. I think there's food above, they had a bunch of pizzas. So it was, it was kind of a fun event. So, you know, maybe if we had some sort of event where, you know, you can come in, like a survey party or something, even like a competition between schools and classrooms. How many parents, I don't know if this is something we can track, how many parents have participated in this? That they're winning classroom or winning grade or winning school, we get some dominant prize recognition.
Yeah, absolutely. This year, we targeted parenting competitions. And because the dates just happen to coincide, we can always do more. And sometimes we're at the mercy of when the date opens the window. What's your? So looking at spring MAP and IAR data. So just, we added some additional clarification just in response to some of the questions to ensure we're getting everything. So IAR is our state assessment and is formerly known as PARC. It is the assessment in grades three through eight that measures proficiency within a grade level. It is required by its speed and we, we take it every year in the spring. MAP is our NWA assessment and that is adaptive assessment that students take on the computer. And this is the assessment that we're able to measure student growth, what determines of the fall to spring. And MAP is an adaptive assessment versus a state assessment. So the, the charts that you received gave lots of number information. So we just wanted to give some additional clarity. So the first chart was the average RIT scores. So what do those average RIT scores say about how students are performing in 161? The majority, just a few bullet points, this is certainly not comprehensive of everything. But the majority of our average spring RIT scores increased from 2017 to 18. Certainly want to see more increase and talk a little bit in a minute about the work we need to do around that. Overall, District 161 grade levels are above the norm or the RIT average in reading and math. Certainly second grade is an area of opportunity that we need to be taking a close look at. That being said, while our student subgroups, like for reduced large, special education students, they are growing. We need to continue to work more to make sure that we're closing the gap between their growth and attaining that RIT form, gaining closer to that average. Sixth and seventh grade, just again, some highlights, sixth to seventh grade MAP average RIT scores, we need to continue to take a look at. We are seeing a decline in that grade level. So MAP growth, just celebrations in reading. So kindergarten, second grade, third grade, 72%, 74%, 71%, really great growth. So those are percent of students meeting their growth target. And celebrations in MAP kindergarten, 84%, 85% to first grade, second grade, 82%. Most students need or seeing their growth targets.
It's really important to note that those are different numbers. So kindergarten student A has a different growth target than kindergarten student B. And it's based on where that child is. So you may have a kindergarten zero six points to meet their particular growth target and another one that has a growth 15. And those represent completely different amounts of content that have to be covered. So the fact that those numbers are that high certainly puts us in the top. I would say five, I would double check it, but easily the top 10% of all districts that take the MAP test, those growth numbers are going to be the same.
So do we have an actual, normally we can reference, what is a, what schools should typically have? Is there a growth rate, I'm sorry, growth attainment?
Yeah, I will say that, yeah, we do have a lot of opportunities for growth. So opportunities in reading, we need to continue to increase our growth in the upper grades, particularly with your eighth grade that we're seeing. It's typical to see students, the, the level of growth get harder to attain or less amount of growth as students progress. But that's certainly not accounting for all the stagnant growth or decline that we've seen across the board. So we need to continue to take a look at that in the upper grades. And opportunities for growth in MAP addressing the difference in growth from fifth to sixth grade. So we know, we talked previously that the student switch from the MAP 2.5 to the sixth plus assessment and that can account for some of the drop off because it's a different test and students according to NWA. It's of course, it's supposed to sort of level off as they go through the sixth grade year. But we're not really seeing that level off. So we need to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to not just go to accept that dip, but account for that dip and continue to boost students up. We feel like it's, and as I say, we can talk about it a little bit more, but we know that we need to do more around, much more attention on consistent focus around our kind of formative assessments. And we feel like in sixth grade, what we may be seeing is a compounding effect of the lack of that practice being consistent as well as the dip that happens naturally from the MAP 2.5 to the sixth plus assessment. So we really need to keep our eye on that and make sure that our school improvement plans are wanting strategies for that.
Have we, have we looked at testing environment changes between fifth and sixth grade? That is a factor in what would impact that?
That's a great point. That's one of the things that came up. We started our school improvement planning process this year as well. And that's one of the things that came up with the Parker building that we're attempting is really making sure that we're creating the right environment for students when they come to junior high school. They're different than how they test in elementary school. They may not be testing with their home teacher. They may not be testing, depending on the time of day that they're testing. So that's something that we'll absolutely see adjusted in our school.
Okay. So another part of that, since you repeated, you know, by, you know, some as an example, where he was testing very poorly. And then I told him, I'd give him 10 bucks if he exceeded his, his growth score. And he got like, nice for 40 points. Really engaged for, before he was just, you know, getting shaky bugs and going through. And then as a follow, I said, okay, you know, I'll give you 20. I said, you know, I'll give you another 10 if you don't come spring, if you beat your, your goal. And sure enough, he beat it by a few points. It wasn't even just parents making it. So the point being that the motivation that kids have to actually be engaged there has a huge impact, my own, sure. You know, one is hyper focused on, you know, to be that for the other couldn't care less until they're sort of skin engaged.
Yeah. And we do, through a whole setting, all of our schools have some sort of system. Again, consistency is sort of the theme that we need to address across the board, whether it's MAP or the IAR data or five essentials. All of our schools do some sort of whole setting with students. But I think we forget at the junior high level, they're still kids. They still like tokens. They still like encouragement and something, you know, even if it's just not one that helps them hopefully themselves. So that's something that we'll make as well.
Can you help us understand, we're really looking at two different sets of numbers. So can you help us understand the relationship between MAP growth? Excuse me. And that's, you know, using your example, your son, you know, met or exceeded his growth target. Right, his growth was supposed to be 12 points, he's 20 points. So the 72% or the 74% second grade represents that. The thing, when you look at their bid scores, the increase was marginal at best. So help the board understand how. So help the board understand how, how, what is the relationship between a student reading their growth target versus, um, a target that needs to be met in order to really move the needle on the RIT scores that we are looking at?
Yeah. So the growth target is based on NWA's calculation of what that student should attain. Basically, if I'm student A and I've started here, it's going to give me a growth start, growth score based on one year's growth. Uh, so every student has a different target to Dr. Smith's point. Uh, so the percent of students, for example, here, celebrations in kindergarten, that means that eighty-four percent of those students met their growth target. Versus the mean is, um, attainment of that, getting closer to that, uh, national mean for that grade level. And that mean changes from fall winter to spring. So that's based on the national norm for everybody. That is not an individual.
Right? Even if we had a hundred percent of our students meeting the growth targets, we wouldn't really see our mean change unless they were succeeding. Exceeding the requirements. And I don't know that, uh, even this year, Bill, in, in any of these, of course, if they give us that, like, how far are they beating the growth targets? So I think this been moved from, by the way, the data this year looks better. I think I've seen it now.
That's a nice call.
Um, I mean, I've been looking at the MAP data for at least seven years. I haven't specifically gone back and looked at all, but I, I think it's better. Um, so I think the administration and teachers, there's a lot of movement and sort of trends we used to see. So thank you for that. But, um, we don't have any reports to tell us how far they've been. I guess we can kind of look at the aggregate growth in each class. And so as we move from a district, what if I, so thoughts for like strategic plan? You know, uh, you guys may be, the percent of leader exceeds and, um, these are great, but I would ask the strategic plan committee to consider setting a goal here. Like maybe sixty percent of the table, right? So we have to be fifty percent. You're also never improved. Um, so we need, you know, sixty percent or more students leader exceeding targets to move forward. And we seem to be close. It seems like I can call. But other than looking at sort of aggregate class data, how far each class went one year to the next? We don't really have like on a student basis, how far they're exceeding their growth targets?
Yeah, there is a report. It's more of a teacher level report, but we could probably imply that we should, uh, get a district line understanding of it.
I don't really need to yet, but I think that, I mean, we have a report like next year, right? When things look really good, and I think that that's going to be the next question we're going to ask.
Sure.
And you know, I think you may be able to leverage file lab for that because if you can get MAP reports, we would have to get a batch file by student target. And then they will provide distance from the annual growth targets. If we can get that into an Excel file, we could upload that and then make the parameters, who beat it by one plus?
Well, I would say like, I don't know, I don't have the appearance here, but I always want to grow targets are sort of under one. Right? So especially as your kids get older, like, you know, your target is increased by three points and then, you know. I always have my kids at top of thirty. Um, fortunately, the teacher's done with the end of the curriculum, then I can't miss one of them, but, uh, you know, um, it would be nice to start expression, you know, especially those students that are, that have got, figure out how to work and move forward to keep them moving beyond the goals of MAPS.
Yeah. And Cameron's a very good point. As students get older in our district, those expected changes in RIT score decrease, right? And so I'm just thinking about, you know, situation, actually, Courtney, if you could hop to spring 2019, MAP mean RIT for reading, right? How would be your first, third? Right? So if you look, I'm looking at seventh grade, 2017, 18. Okay? So the mean is two twenty-two point four of those seventh graders last year. The mean, or actually the norm is two eighteen. So they're already starting off four points above the national norm. Awesome. Absolutely fantastic. Then they grow another three points. So the expected norm growth was less than two points. And those students grew three, right? So we have a lot of really awesome situations where we have groups of kids who are performing above the national norms and they're growing more than what's expected. Where we have to figure out and where we have opportunities for improvement, especially as we get to our upper grade level classes, their content focus. Those mean scores are based on content. And so as we look at math and we have this particular math class, which is going to cover this particular math content. We could be locking kids into RIT scores if we don't have the ability to differentiate effectively. Creates individual learning pathways that can take students who are ready for more and more challenging content, maybe not record another class altogether. If we can figure out ways to challenge them effectively during school. Sorry, Matthew.
Well, if I may, and I don't want to interrupt, but, um, is that not what the, uh, the Northwestern, uh, program was trying to do? Where they were trying to get kids who are already bumping on the ceiling and saying, okay, what else can you do from here? And they may have to take, I think a few years ago, like they took the ACT or the, the eight-nine and then, um, did that one to take the SAT and sort of track that data to see in what content is, is really excelling from here.
I would say it's probably our sixty-fifth to eighty-fifth percentile students, probably. It's students that aren't going to show up on a new MAPs or, you know, in a bit Northwestern four summer programs necessarily. But they have pockets of strength and they're ready to be extended as we can extend them and have them maintain a solid base. But capture some of these additional standards and skills. That's where those mean numbers go.
And do you know, um, cause I know that, you know, the MAPs is using, you know, SAT. Do you know of any, uh, sort of assessment that would sort of bridge that gap between for our sixty-five to eighty-five percent?
This is, this is where I would say, because it tells us what we're looking at. And I'll tell you, as you look at the differences in growth percentage numbers, those numbers in the eighties and, you know, over here. Um, so for example, I'm looking at a building grade level with seven, nine percent of their students meeting or seeing their growth target. They're the ninety-sixth percentile, right? That is absolutely incredible. And so, but where we having the best experience with those growth numbers is in the buildings, typically elementary. Or we've spent more time talking about differentiation, independent learning and all of those different things. And I think where we've started to open the door at Parker is in those different, different areas, frankly. That's where a lot of the work left in this.
What can you tell us about, if you look at the reading celebrations and opportunities? What can you tell us about the other third of those students who did not meet their growth? Cause what we don't have is subgroup data.
Sure.
And so I have to imagine that a significant portion of that third of kindergarten or the third of second graders who did not, um, um, meet their growth target probably falls within one of our subgroups. And there has to be many opportunities for growth. Um, and so we don't have that data, but can you talk a little bit about what the third, what that other percentage of students looks like?
Yeah, I mean, I think these, most of those students would be, not most, but a portion of those students would be students who are receiving interventions. Um, students who are getting additional support and through after school programs or other during school day programs to try to help them reach their target. Um, I think the challenge is that if, uh, those, so eighty-four percent kindergarten, um, how that plays out in a classroom level is that the teachers are trying to meet all of the students' needs because they're on individual targets. So the same approach or the same, uh, teaching learning experiences happening for those students. We really need to identify what's the abstract that we need to do to help all students get to that growth target. So it's not as if that additional thirty percent, uh, is getting a different class or across the board. Because many of those students could have been close to their target, but they didn't meet it just yet. It doesn't mean that they were significantly below. Certainly some of them, absolutely. Uh, but the teachers are really focused on trying to support all students and reaching that, that individual target.
And then, not to, but it's primarily our students who are above the proficiency score that don't make growth.
Right.
Right? Our, if you look at our initial spend data, our special education students, for example, at Parker in reading outperformed their grade level peers in every grade level. And then in math, outperformed one time in a, right? So the kids that we are acquiring interventions and supports into have to make their growth. And that's, that's just not an option for them not to matter back. I think probably a year and a third, at least even a quarter more than what, what is basically expected. So that they're on that catch up growth kind of path. So once we get everything into file lab, we bring all the reports back. I would say at least initially, the data showing that the kids that we are intervening with by initial instruction and experiences are growing faster than their grade level peers.
And file labs report will have, will be broken down by subgroup?
Yeah, you can filter for any student group, you can filter for all classes, really anything.
So we'd be able to see kids, let's say at ninety-fifth and ninety-ninth, how many, what percentage of them did not meet their target?
Definitely.
Is there a board level interface or file lab available? Kind of a public facing. Let me check. You know, um, I know they have it on financial side. Their forecast five has a, I don't know what it's called, but.
There are pieces you can put out.
Yeah, you can put it out. It's kind of a live, these are your options. These are your, you know, three, four, five parameters and you can click through it. Something in different ways on the financial side, but I would assume there's something on that.
I personally, and I suspect some other board members would love to just be able to look at the data instead of, I mean, I really appreciate all the effort you guys put in answering our questions. But we can, um, but, you know, with all data questions, sometimes I look at it and, and two days later I decide I don't want to know it. I have a new question, right? So, um, it would be great if we could self-help a little bit and reduce the burden on you guys to answer our questions. And then when I actually have a question, so.
Sure.
We probably can do that. So, um, that would be great if you have that, that we can see something. And I know there's a, a few requests.
But at least by major subgroups, it's like we have to get to the true meaning of it, just by this one.
Quick question. So as you're going to do slides, same to your side, do we have access to that or do we have to do it manually?
We will, yeah. We, we will absolutely share it. We were responding to questions and said, okay, there's some themes coming out here and then we need to pull together and just try and make more clearly, make more precise and, and.
And if I haven't answered it right, I appreciate the fact that this is addition, because this has helped. So this is actually addresses some of the questions I'm sure you guys are hearing. Um, but Jared, before you get too far into the, the IAR, um, some of the cases, I know I'd like to see the, um, things that also have aligned with the curriculum changes in terms of the years. Um, so before there was a, um, bridges where our, our sports were, because now we have just two years to, 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 to bridges. Um, so you can't see that.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, I think it's the same, um, region, um, can you see where that is? Um, and then again, cohorts to see if there's any movement in cohorts. So.
That's right. Correct me if I'm wrong. So as the person who's probably on the board, this is the most I'm likely to discuss. I would say qualitatively that on reading, they, they quote from, for cohorts year to year and what we're seeing here from this point to eighteen, this point to nineteen is more consistent than we have seen in many years. So it's, so reading here, every cohort except for fifth to sixth grade has made pretty good growth on a negative basis. And I think historically it's been, reading's been good, the better performing, but it's been more spotty. But we mean, there were more instances of this grade having growth, this building that crossed. And they see the lesson of that. So that helps raise the fight in some historical perspective. But I do have a question about your last item there. It says opportunities for growth in math. It says aggressive difference in growth in sixth grade. So the story, especially the last few years before this year, we were seeing no or negative growth in fifth to sixth grade in math. And, um, and I think that's a trend that's been around for a while before we appeared. Um, and so on the one hand, I'm really excited that that's not there. So obviously some of the work we've gone and doing has had some results. And, um, you know, I think, you know, fifth gr- uh, fifth grade was at two twenty-one and sixth grade was at two twenty-four. And that's almost the target sort of magnitude growth. So that's awesome, right? And so then in math, though, then we have this seventh grade where we had what appears to be five points of negative growth, which is the only black spot in all of that data. Um, and maybe you don't have an answer yet, but, but that's like, okay, you guys solved a really good problem. But I solved the problem rather well, but, um, what happened there, right? That, that five points of negative growth from this year, right?
It is. And I think what this is getting at is also to your point, seeing, seeing that growth consistently. Because one year of that isn't really going to help us long-term. Um, we know it's something that we've had our, our eye on and we need to be, continue to be more and more intentional about keeping an eye on that. Um, and there's, we, we need to continue to have conversations at the building leadership level and the teacher level with what, what did happen with seventh grade, um, and just.
What went well with sixth grade this year?
I'm sorry.
What went well with sixth grade this year in math? Because clearly, you know, there's, there's departure from proprietary data and so something went wrong.
Yeah. So our teachers are getting stronger in the implementing the curriculum. Um, there's, we have more common assessments than we've had before. Um, students are, as a structure of the program, students are sort of forced, if you will, to operate as mathematicians in class on a daily basis. So one of the structures of the program is that students work in groups and there's peer-to-peer learning going on. Um, so I think teachers are getting stronger and stronger and without those routines and that habit. Um, while we have, but we'll talk a little bit about it in a minute, but while we have those forms, those common assessments, uh, we need to do a much better job of consistently using those assessments to drive a source change. And not just waiting until the assessment data comes out to make a change, but day-to-day instruction, we tweak the instruction, make adjustments.
And you know, with, with the term consistency, um, I would, I guess I'm going to use the word assumption. But I would assume that what we're also doing is that we're providing a consistent curriculum for all of our elementary schools. And we're providing a consistent level of training and support for all of our teachers at all of our elementary schools. Um, is there a way we can see whether or not we're achieving consistency with the results from students from that perspective?
In terms of the, like the sixteen, seventeen data, in addition to that, or the pre-bridges and CPM data or?
And, and, um, I would posit it more to current data.
Okay.
So that we can see that, um, we're actually, I mean, things that are being implemented, the resources that we're investing in are showing that we're closing that inconsistency gap. Like if one school is, well, we're going to start child there, let's look at those numbers.
Sure.
Close, close to your child there. And so we should, I would think we start to see that in the data. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I think.
It's in there. I think it's in there now. I think, um, with the strong growth scores, if you look at the different grade levels and their overall totals, yeah. I think it definitely shows that we've created gains on the consistency front. You know, we've, we've talked about, you know, business of widgets and, you know, just stamp out pieces. I think every time you have, you know, teachers who are given the tools, and I think we've got a little bit of that job of that. Um, kind of especially as, you know, building up our building principles and they're going to support our teachers. As we give our teachers the tools, they will use them and they will, you know, create four, five, six different strands within their classroom. As we give our teachers the tools, they will use them, and they will, you know, create four, five, six different strands within their classrooms. And I have kids who are receiving learning experiences that are targeted to where they are. And I think as we have that, those growth numbers will increase, and so will the proficiency numbers. So, I, I would say that these results, and as we start to normalize the continuous improvement, that would show that our curriculum instruction and assessment kind of pieces are all aligned a little bit better.
Well, I also don't want to actually make the assumption that, um, even though we have a consistent curriculum and teachers are receiving the same tools in their toolbox, um, and delivering instruction the same, that the outcomes would be the same across school from school. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, so I don't want us to, um, make that assumption, my dad. And, and I can get, I get what you're saying, you know, obviously, you know, we don't want people to target a school because they think one is something more than the other. But I also don't want us to make the assumption that because they're all getting the same thing, that the results will always be exactly the same.
Absolutely, and, and I've said it before, curriculums don't teach themselves. Um, this is effort on our teachers and our leaders' part to be thoughtful with the reasons that we have, and make great decisions instructionally and in classroom, and I would to our students also for bringing to the occasion, so.
And just, just one little piece, and I promise, but the reason growth is so important is, is, you know, is you've looked at the charts, you know, our building, um, you know, Serena Hills probably has the lowest proficiency scores for the high school. Right? And so when you think about what's really happening in that building, it's a lot of really good instruction, because the proficiency scores just kind of mark whether or not you've hit the target or other people think you should be. That growth, that growth number says, this is your target, here's where you should be, did you get it? And so, there are pockets like that all over as you look at the data charts, and I think they're very reflective of the hard work that the teachers are doing.
Karen, I have a question, Parker, remind me of a couple of things. This was the first year that geometry moved back to ACHF, correct?
Yes, this was the first year.
And then, um, two years ago, we offered a pre-algebra course specifically, right? And then last year, or this past academic year, it's like a introduction to algebra, or an algebra act. So some of our curriculum, especially with some of our advanced kids, has shifted some.
Yeah, and all of the shifts have happened within CPM. It can just give us some flexibility with courses. Um, we want to get to the place where as many, as much as possible, everyone is at a minimum, leaving Parker experiencing algebra, um, and not just the ACHF algebra course. So if students are not ready for high school-level algebra, we're able to provide still, obviously, it doesn't have to be high school-level algebra, but those shifts have happened within the CPM curriculum, so that's not a downside.
So then, did we also have a larger-than-normal group of sixth graders taking that algebra class this year?
We did, and that was the first year, not necessarily larger than normal, because it was the first year we did both. But we had, um, some sixth graders who took that class as well. Some did better than others with sort of the, the rigor of it and the challenge. We leveled off early on in the school year as needed, but for the most part, I think they did fine.
So, the, um, the sort of decline from sixth grade to seventh grade at Parker, do we know yet, like, what could the students that's focused on? Do we have students that are placed too high and struggle, right? Do we focus on just the lower performing students or do we do it, do we have a final data issue?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Do we have a sense for where the, the source of that, that lack of growth from sixth to seventh grade occurred in math at Parker?
Yeah, I, I think some of it may have had to do with some students advancing and some gaps in their learning, um, but not across the board. I think we have to take a closer look at where each student fell from that group and get a better idea of that.
Yeah, the other thing that, as you asked that question, what I thought of that, so two thirty-two is typically your health target. So we could have placed kids incorrectly going the other way as well, right? Maybe we did not place them as aggressively as we should have, and so there could have been some regression as they forgot skills, because like I said, if they were sitting at a two thirty-three and a half as, you know, a mean root score, and then they, you know, contract five points, well, some of those kids may have been, you know, swinging on their shoes on that spring test.
Well, I assume it's my default assumption when I see the decline, right? But you guys, you guys have worked hard to place kids well, and I think, thank you, most of the parents in this should agree that that's working well. And I, I think that in a board update, Dan, you gave us recently, that you actually expressed a concern that would maybe pushing it's too far. And so, I guess, I believe that this is, well, it seems unlikely to me that we are, that this is a result of not placing kids aggressively, not really getting on top of this. I think maybe it still is.
We'll find out, I mean, this is a simple process to run that by, by schools, we're able to break that, break that down.
Some of that, and there's, there's two ways to look at that placement issue, it could show up in the data, it could show up in student frustration, that's not, that's not measured on an assessment. It's my sixth grader saying, this is too hard for me, and, you know, that delicate balance of how much do you motivate to say, you know, on paper, you have this course to be able to do this, you can do it, versus saying, knowing what the frustration level is, can't compete and just try to make an adjustment.
I also feel like, I mean, in, in all honesty, I mean, I feel like for the past eight years, our math program has been in this experimental phase, and it has changed every single year. And so, if we feel like we are at a point now where we can clearly, where you can clearly articulate what our math program is, what our goals are, um, then, two years from now, we should be having a slightly different kind of conversation, right? Because your, your seventh graders still are in the mix of these changing programs and structures, right? But there should be a point where we now can have a, a group of sixth graders that we follow for the next three years, who have been a part of a math program that has been consistent and has not changed.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I have two kids who have gone through Parker, and they're experienced, and they're two years apart, but they experience completely different math programs. Um, and actually, and they, they experience completely different math programs at Western as well. I mean, so, it has at least been eight years where we have been experimenting and changing and changing and changing. So, it would be great if next year's data actually shows some consistency with the sixth grade data that we have now in terms of did we place them too high, or could they actually tip them a little bit? Or rigor, right? So, we're looking for some stability within our math program in one sixty-one.
Really getting algebra to as many students as possible, Israeli cake, I mean, that, that has been, um, for high school-level algebra to have been the only option for students to truly get an algebra class. Not every student is ready for high school-level algebra, but we do need to make sure that our kids are leaving Parker having experienced some problems, so. I'm hoping to see the impact of that.
Right, so I think in this, on the same theme, it would be great going forward to hear thoughts about what the expectations are for every fifth grader before they go on to Parker, right? I mean, we've focused a lot on, and I get, so it's now going backwards, like, so this is, we, we know where we want to be, and so what does that look like now for every fifth grader?
Sure, to be part of that, absolutely.
And I'm curious, as, as I'm listening to your conversation about, do we have a sense of whether there was a gap between eighth graders in Parker going to two thirty-three? And have we closed that gap, or are you thinking that our, our students in Parker prepare for ACHF math?
It's wide, so you have students entering freshman year and having to do a double block of pre-algebra type class, and students that are entering taking pre-calculus and even calculus.
It really is, it's very wide.
So, you know, for yourself, when we're doing, whether, or do, or do you have a cause any of those gaps?
Well, I think given that the goal is that students now leave one sixty-one having had some algebra experience, starts to close that gap, because outside of that goal, we, I don't even know how many students we have, we've had historically moving on ACHF, taking the double block of, of pre-calculus. And we know if math sets you up for all of your science tracks, right? And so, um, so I think having a goal of everybody has experience in some level of algebra by the time they leave one sixty-one, starts their closing that gap, but it really is wide.
Since we did, we had more math classes, like in that six and seven grade range, where, um, unfortunately, I think, I don't think it was intended, unfortunately, a lot of students that sort of floundered, like, you know, talking about secondary, where they would get places or this intermediate class, or whatever learning you knew. And at least, you know, a couple of years, two years ago, probably, for two years to about three years ago, we probably had forty, fifty percent of students that were more than agreeable to buying that algebra. So I think we can go look at where we're at now, for part of, over the last few years, we've sort of reorganized math classes, so there's less opportunity for kids to replace in class with a little bit of program. And then I would continue to interact with Dana and Amabel to get rid of non-high school algebra altogether, because I can't imagine anything more meaningful for teenagers to be done for boys.
All high school algebra.
All high school algebra for a period.
That is a great conversation for the high school that we encourage.
Yes. Okay, so, so this is a good question, and I think that over the next couple of weeks, when kids, yeah, I would like to see where our decision is on the, you know, what kids are on high or off track.
Yeah.
I think it's off track.
And, and I also ask that strategically and purposefully, in terms of strategic planning, and in terms of twenty-first century students, so, and in terms of all interaction that we're having this way, I wanted to, so. If we're looking at whatever goal we set is, is possible achievable, if the, um, the having pre-algebra was it, five as a target, so what's the next, whatever, to chart the closing gap?
Will Dana, um, grade level verticals have an opportunity to meet, so, like, all the secondary teachers, all the third grade teachers, to talk about data and what's different between schools?
So we had shared school curriculum planning on Thursday, and we'll continue that through the summer.
So they meet actually just by all, like, all of the guys meeting together?
Meet in school teams.
Meet in school teams.
Across the...
We can be part of a school.
I only because, that's one of the things that we're talking about, right? We want kids to have the same experience everywhere, so when we look at math growth, the reading across seventh grades is different, is significant. And I wonder if teachers would welcome the opportunity to talk to, just to have a better understanding of one sixty-one kids, not necessarily from the hill or Serena, but what it means and what's working well in one place, not so well in another place.
So, looking at preliminary IAR data, so again, uh, the, this is the state assessment data that we take every year, it used to be part, the test is exactly the same as it was before, it has only changed in name. Um, so, we have the assessment in the, our scores right now, preliminary, uh, we literally have a list of students and how each student did and their skill score, as well as their needs exceeds below a person that. Um, we do not have groups, definitions of the group, how the groups did. Celebrations for preliminary IAR, uh, most schools showed overall growth in ELA in mathematics. What we don't know yet, and what is still preliminary, is how the state will define whether or not that is adequate growth, appropriate growth, whether that growth compared to how other schools did across the state was great or not so great, um, that is yet to be known. Opportunities for growth with IAR data, so we saw minimal growth in mathematics in grade six through eight, so we definitely, again, want to keep taking a look at that. And topic growth across the schools and across the grade levels, so wanting to see more consistency and tighter growth across. Again, while we saw all of our students for the most, all of our schools for the most part increased, there were pockets of grade levels that were moving, we want to see more. Um, we also need to do more analysis, we talk a lot about the students who are in needs and exceeds, because that's how the state sort of leads with the data and how that leads into designations. But we need to continue to do further analysis of those students who are in the block levels, and so that's, that's our next step for us.
One of the best parts of what I had in this, and I get it, it's preliminary, that doesn't make anybody feel good, but last year, we were starting this conversation in September. School had started, the classrooms were already off and running, and we're starting to talk about this large dataset. Now we have it, because what we did last year, kudos to the teachers and the principals and Amabel and her team, started breaking the data down by building grade level class that we have particular standards, and really being purposeful about the types of experiences. We can do that now, and so that we're not giving up for about weeks of instruction, where we can take this time, but we're already working on school improvement plans. We can put the work in place so that when we start in August, when the teachers come back, we're having the conversations based on the students who are in front of us, and the type of, types of experiences that they need to be before.
Quick question, with the IAR, um, because, I mean, the title's preliminary, and because we're about to target with the budget, does any tie-in to this evidence-based funding in terms of our growth and our, um, our impact in terms of the feedback? I see you checking it.
No, there, at this point, the scores are not falling into the funding model. Funding model is being driven by what resources have been found to produce results, but your funding is not driven by the results themselves.
Our opportunity is to look at the results that we received in relation to the evidence-based funding model, and identify any gaps that we have in our allocated funds. You know, the school, the school based on its profile should have five reading specialties, and we have five. So, if we want to match the research and the recommendations, are we going to have, I think that's a real opportunity that we have to look at by building.
Well, since we're in, so I'm really grateful that the state is giving us data at a sooner.
Sure.
Uh, when will it?
I think next year.
Yeah, so we, originally, we were not supposed to get these sort of raw scores for students until July one, and all of a sudden, it showed up prior to that. So what we're thinking, and the regional office of education has sort of given us a tentative response, is that July is when the official designation and how everything plays in together.
Does that mean they're going to be doing school report cards this summer? I mean, after years, 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 and maybe it's October, finally, we're going to be...
No.
Kind of that?
The situation, no. However...
What about five, send it one, two, and all of you then?
June thirtieth.
So, sorry, I'm sorry, just to get to Cam's question in the days. So yes, we will have some access on July first, but it's not great. We have the opportunity to go in and make any final adjustments based on what the school report cards should look like, based on the data clean up to have. As long as we respond, basically just kind of sign off by September ninth, we will have early access to some of the designations by October first, but...
Sorry, I was going to mind you checking that again.
Yeah, my, my guess is that they'll still be embargoed until October the 1st. Looking at that, but we'll have access to our report, which means we can still do the work, we just have more guard than I have.
But it is huge to have this data when we're in school for the planning process, that is extremely helpful. Um, just one additional elevation that, that did not get a chance to put in there, we're still taking a look at it, but we have over, we have exactly forty students in the exceeds category for ELA at Parker at seventh grade, which is huge. That is not a number that we've seen before, it's not typical, um, and we're still looking into it, but we think the Connecticut class at seventh grade have a lot to do... Um, and we're still looking into it, but we think the communities class at seventh grade have a lot to do with it, a lot of the students were in the communities class, and they were high students, but they were meaning before, they were not exceeding. So that is sort of a, a thumbs up outlier on the ELA side that I'm really excited about.
So when you receive this in its permanent or the final form, will it, um, already be broken down by subgroup?
Yes.
Yes, we'll be in the school report cards first.
Well, but will we have to wait until the school, because you said you didn't think the school report was done until later in the year?
In theory, the school report cards are done on the first. So we should be able to manipulate all of the data in those subgroups.
Figure that out. Yeah, I mean, because I think we would be very interested in seeing the subgroup data, um, especially the special, um, our special ed students, because that is such a high, high priority. 161, um, and so we, we want to see what that data looks like, um, and then how that data will inform whatever plan will be made for the fall. So, um, we, we need to understand what that plan is and what the data.
Absolutely.
Looks like. So that would be, I'm sorry, so we would see that when?
I'd like to talk about it, this would suggest October.
So we obviously can't wait until October before we see a plan for spend, so.
No, those are improvement plans, that work happens no matter what. So we're doing that now, getting any insights that we can from the, the actual batch file. It's a little easier with special education because you're talking about a hundred students spread across two different grade levels. So digging into that information, I don't know if they're unusual reports, but we can gather initial information about those kids that we can't, about our free reduced population, for example, because it's four hundred and seventy-five kids or, you know, whatever that number is. So the work won't wait, we will start, we will just be prepared, if we get additional, access to additional information, we're ready to make those adjustments.
So the possibility that we're dead in order to adjust, we actually do that work for special ed, or we wait till our program or not?
I do, depends on whatever we have access to, we have access to, you know.
We should give them access.
We all want to, absolutely, um, whatever I R data we have for sure, and that's what the teams are doing, they're not waiting.
And so will there be a special ed plan embedded into each SIP as well as an overall district, um, plan that can be articulated?
I think it comes down to two things, right? I think we need to get clarity here about what those measurement bars are, because if you show on some level that our specimens are performing our typical six figures, right? It would also show that they're behind in the proficiency scores. And we're going to have to be okay with some amount of that, right? Because we have students who are, have a designation of special education because of a mental or physical disability that is preventive effective learning. Our task is to mitigate that as much as possible and to accelerate them. So we have to, I think we have to figure out where our kids are starting and where we're going to, and then what those requirements are. I think we can, we can talk about how that looks in the school improvement plans, but I'd be hesitant to, to put something down that distracts and doesn't add to, you know, the work. I think our main focus is on Parker, and so yes, that has to be in that school improvement plan because that's where they're going to spend all of their work and then whatever that looks like. Kind of tripping down to the elementary, so at least to start for the first year, I think that would be probably my recommendation, because it's a big lift.
But I also wouldn't want us to go ahead and, and, and I know we're not going to just focus on Parker, no special ed, but I also want to definitely try to, try to get in front of her by looking at what's coming to Parker, that's how I want to do it.
Is the, right, but we can't make that statement and assume that it hasn't happened, right? So focused on interventions, the focus on individualized education plans that are implemented, acceleration growth, those are conversations that have happened up until this point. Trying harder certainly within our, our purview, but we're working on it. So, so by not having specific special education, we can do that, bring whatever you're looking for. What should we, what other changes should we make to the school improvement process? Because we're also, you have our culture climate, you have our core, you have all of those pieces. If we're going to adjust our focus, where would you like us to shift the case?
I don't know if it's necessarily shifting, because I think, to me, this tips pretty much have sort of hit the same, um, key target areas year after year. You may talk about it a little bit differently, um, or you may include some different, um, metrics, um, in it, but I think, you know, from year to year, from what I've seen, they kind of hit all the same targets. I think culture climate clearly is, is an important goal, maybe it's not as important in one of the schools as it is in one of the other schools, so that should be articulated. But I do think, um, at the end of the day, we all understand maybe at varying degrees that our special ed program needs our attention more than it has probably received over the past three years. And so we want to make sure we are supporting that, and so maybe there's a discussion that can happen, you know, at the instructional learning committee level so that there's a baseline understanding of where we are starting and then how we want to grow from that. Um, because I can't articulate that, and so, um, we need to be comfortable with the data. We don't know what the data looks like, but given, um, our state designation, we know the data doesn't look great. And so if that's our starting point, then that's our starting point, but I would like to hear what a funding would look like that helps us grow from that level.
Really, I would respond if it focuses on, on our gaps, right? So our school improvement planning goal focuses on the achievement gap. And I would say this is also where the strategic plan process is so important, we know the effect that poverty has on education, that shift is left important, right? And so as we make these different commitments, whether it is to having every special education student be proficient, or having every student comes from a free reduced house, household, looking year and a half growth every year. Those are going to make decisions for us as we move forward, because again, the research would show students who come from poverty are at a disadvantage. They have opportunity disadvantages that we have to address that can create situations where kids are two years behind walking in the front door of the year, right? So when we, we have that and we know that and they get to third grade, whether, whether those students, and they're two years behind, we have to make sure that we're back in those pieces as we're talking about goals. Because it has to be in relation to where the child is, not just where we're being measured, right? And so when we talk about IAR goals, we can't just say, well, hey, at third grade, we're going to increase by ten percent. Well, if you're going to increase by ten percent, that number is forty-five, so you're going to go to fifty-five percent, but if the kids coming in are at thirty-five percent. So now you've just set a goal to grow twenty percent one year, right? So these things can't happen out of context without knowing exactly where the kids are in the purpose of plans that we can put in place. And I think we can probably capture both, because we do have special education, but I would say we're, we're not serving our free reduced lunch students either, right? If the barometer is proficiency, right, we're not doing that. If it's growth, I would say that we are. And I think when we talk about subgroups, growth has to be our barometer, because that is what we can control. We can't control how far our kids come in behind, that's too late for that. We can't control giving those kids every opportunity to, to accelerate their learning, to catch up to where the target is.
So I guess this is my one request in regards to free reduced lunch, uh, which, you know, very reflectively, I could say, hey, that was neat growing up, um, as well as many other at-risk things. And I remember a conversation my mom had me with Sister Julia, uh, at, you know, she's probably a very, who, uh, you know, about why she was not going to, you know, help my brother and I, according to my mom. The way that she understood, you know, the Catholic school system is supposed to help kids, his mom was working, you know, fifteen hour shifts in the, at work two, um, and expecting the kids to get the homework done. Um, that there wasn't, they weren't going to step in and do some after-school programming, because that's not what they did under our plan. Um, and for my mom, that was something that she couldn't really process, because she, growing up in the sixties, fifties, that was something that she didn't. Um, and, you know, my point is that, you know, as much as this is a whole category of, of, uh, you know, kids who were identified as, as not succeeding as much as the non-free as much. Um, I, I guess I would really rather refocus more specifically, is it that kids need more do they, is it that they need after-school, um, uh, homework? Do they, is it a matter of expectation, is it communication with parents? Is it, you know, what specifically started from the moment they went to after-school? Uh, is it that is creating an extra, you know, degree that they're at a decline in the ramp towards success, that other kids seem to have a level of plank? Um, because, you know, I think if we look globally in terms of, well, national data says we need more minutes in the classroom of this, I don't know that that's addressing the specific needs that the kids have. And I, and I think it all comes down to, you know, certainly a building level where, you know, as school administrators and teachers and other kids, you know, my, my kids have benefited. As my, my kids' teachers could say very specifically, this is where this kid needs help, and this is what we're going to do. And they got the help, and they both did, both my kids did really, really well in areas that they were struggling or maybe they were further struggling. So I, I guess I would, you know, just kind of, I don't want to say caution, but, you know, I guess I'd shy away from the globalization of, okay, these are the subjects that didn't do well. And so we're going to, you know, globally try to address it with, okay, you're all intervention, you know, as opposed to maybe finding out specifically what we can do. Uh, so that when you, you know, do build your plans, you can build specifically to these kids. Uh, there's a great article years ago in reading, you know, six reasons why kids fill, um, uh, reading tests, and it laid out six different things where they found real trends. And there was actually really good interventions that were different from each other based upon, and, you know, the same with, um, special ed, you know, you know, kids growing in special ed program across the district.
No, I was just saying.
But Parker, sorry. So then, um, then, you know, there's, but they're different, you know, I mean, so even kids who are designated as, you know, specific learning disability, you know, this kid is different from this other kid who's designated the same thing. And they need completely different, for which, you know, our classroom, highly trained classroom teachers can, can deliver that. Um, and I, I guess my point is that I, I hope we're not drifting toward a global fix or a global designation, like really, I see it as, these are specific needs we're dealing with. And I, I hope we can see trends, you know, that we can, you know, make sure that they get that intervention so that they can succeed. Um, and when I say can, I mean, change the environment so that they're able to take this opportunity.
Then this board is not waiting, right? Say, that's been actually pretty progressive with trying to address these issues in the group. Right? I mean, that's a perfect example of giving kids enough, an extra opportunity to get in. Now, we're still in the research phase, phase, and so we can't just offer a terrible level, but that's our first step, expanding pre-k. Getting those children in the door as soon as possible for work that we do with the child's fine, identify kids for early childhood. Yes, it was, it's, it's providing as many resources and options as possible, and I kind of made this a little comment, but, okay. If proficiency is our target, then where is our zero to three program?
Well, I think this is a really great question.
And.
Flipping or not.
Are we interacting with, you know, with those wonderful ones? They're not here yet, but they're going to be at some point, and what is our ability to develop families and parents to spend? So, you know, through the SIP process, to Michelle's point, we'll see special education, community subgroups, both of them are robustly addressed. But overall, because I'm good structure.
I think we all agree, I mean, that's the whole, or the purpose of the I E P, right?
Yes.
Right? Um, and I think contextualizing our opportunity is, um, is extremely helpful, because it does help us see that, that every student has, comes into the same set of issues. But I also want to make sure that we are supporting, we are clearly identifying and supporting, um, all of our students, right? And so that we have a very clear process and a set of procedures that we are following, right? So do we have complete I E Ps? Are there goals in those I E Ps? Like we had this conversation this school year, right? Like, so how do we make sure, um, that as part of our goals is to make sure we have the proper policies and systems and procedures in place? To make sure we have a bare minimum, we can say at every school, we know that our buying teachers are doing this, right? And then from there, basically, we jump, are the jump off points to what makes them a I E P. Um, so we just need to be able to have, um, confirmation that we are at a place where the district feels extremely comfortable with our process and procedures that are in place on a building by building level. Is that your last one?
It is.
Okay.
Well, I second to last, let me get through it. Um, so just some highlights, I've been, again, we are in the school improvement planning process, we had our, our June date, we have July date coming up, June, July twenty-fourth. Uh, we've been working with the regional office of education, their team has been coming in to help us with, uh, developing our plans, making sure we're understanding our data appropriately. Um, just some highlights, we know that, I mentioned earlier, we need to have a consistent and intentional effort towards making sure we're utilizing common core assessments. Not just looking at them, but what does that data tell us our teachers to do differently? What's the retweet, what's the intervention, what's the acceleration and the enrichment for students who are above? So these are things that you can plan to see, that you plan to see in your school improvement plan. Um, also instructional practices, so we're working towards a shared understanding of what are the I R practices that we should start to see in all classrooms. We're starting that work with our principals, um, and that's not to say that that using our, our super strong agreement. Um, that's not to say that that work will not impact teachers, because we expect our, our principals, myself included, to be in classrooms every day observing and providing feedback, and that's how the strategies will get to teachers on a particular basis. So we really want to utilize our leaders to make sure we're having the impact that we need to have. Next year, we would train the teachers as well officially on those strategies. And culture and climate, utilizing our five essentials and school surveys as our measure for culture and climate. Uh, Tyson just gives us lots of information that tells us what all of our stakeholders feel about our schools, and we feel comfortable using that as a measure for culture and climate support.
If I may, the focus, I think, in the first one, um, could also, should also include what the relationship is between all of the formative assessments that you are using. I do feel like there is a gap between teaching, reteaching, intervention, and there's, there is a huge gap, and there's something that's missing in those conversations. And I know that we brought Pat on to work in intervention, we don't know where that work ends, and it would be great, um, sometime over the summer to hear about what that work was. But I think it would be extremely important for teachers to understand what the relationship is between all, how we're using all these formative assessments.
Yeah, and it's, it's not to say that our teachers are not giving the assessments, um, internally, we have almost too many assessments. Both of our curriculum, all of our curriculum materials have multiple options for assessment. Now it's time to streamline and decide what are the, what we can use by ourselves around, um, in order to make instructional decisions. The other options, the other assessment will become optional. The other options, the others become optional. And finally, next steps, just again, we're doing, uh, school improvement planning, uh, June and July. Our buildings will present their school improvement plan on August 12th to the board of education and be able to hear feedback on those. And again, we will be able to, the first time ever, this is a long time, be able to utilize IAR data in our school improvement plans versus going back into.
And like, so, and, uh, SIPs, will there be an area in those that discusses, go back to the previous line you just had, especially the instructional practices? Uh, and how, want to ever see that or not?
Yeah, you should see something hitting each of these in all of the plans. So, um, in terms of the instructional strategy, you should see each school having identified one of the four cornerstone or set of the instructional strategies with silver strong as their area of focus. So whether it's organization or engagement and enjoyment, um, we want our schools to zero in on set of strategies that they want to focus on. Again, that work will be with the principals this year, but the principals will be giving feedback and support to teachers around those.
Because I just want to make sure that, that, that exercise that we're making with the principals will sound to you, and we can see that we're giving.
Right, so, yes, purposefully though, those teachers will have been trained in this. Right, so, um, I would say the actual teacher impact, we'll see in the summer, 2020, it's two days directly, but the connection with the classroom certainly will be established. We can do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes our meeting. I need a motion to adjourn. Please. All of the papers, they are, uh, closed standing. Meeting adjourned at 9:43 PM.